Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, we welcome you to this evening's La Plata County Commissioners, District 2 and 3 Candidate Forum. My name is Jean Arrow. I'm president of the La Plata League. With me tonight is fellow League member Shelley Walcheck, who will be our moderator. Shelley also serves as the director of the Pine River Library in Bayfield, and has worked closely with us to encourage all citizens to exercise their rights and responsibilities as voters. The La Plata County Board of County Commissioners consists of three elected officials, each from a geographical district, but all elected at large by voters across the county. Yes, as registered voters in La Plata County, you get to vote for one candidate in both District 2 and 3. We are grateful tonight to have sponsors from across the county. Joining us as sponsors are Fort Lewis College, AAUW, the Pine River Library, the Ignacio Library, the Durango Library, the Women's Resource Center, Durango Adult Education, KSUT, and Four Corners Broadcasting, which is broadcasting this event live to their listeners on KIUP 930 AM and 97.3 FM. Thank you to all our sponsors. The forum is also being recorded by Durango Government Television. The recording will be available on the DGov YouTube channel soon after the forum. We had hoped to include American Sign Language interpreters during this forum, but encountered some pretty complex technical issues. But please know that DGov TV's YouTube recording can be viewed with English closed caption. To access the closed captions, simply click on the CC at the bottom of the YouTube screen. This forum is also being translated into Spanish that will be available a few days after the forum on the LWV La Plata Facebook page under the video tab. This year in Colorado, we have a very full ballot. In addition to presidential, senatorial, state legislative judges, Board of Education, and county commissioner candidate elections, we also have 11 statewide ballot issues. Through our candidate and ballot issue forums, we want to encourage voters to vote the full ballot. The League is committed to providing voters opportunities to learn about candidates and ballot issues so they can vote from a position of confidence and knowledge. Tonight, we will learn about the important role the Board of County Commissioners plays in La Plata. Since the League began in 1920, we have focused on voter education. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation by citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Participating in and hosting candidate and ballot issue forums is just one of the many activities that the League engages in to accomplish our mission. The League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties, but we do support and oppose issues that do or do not agree with our state and national positions. We welcome those of you joining us on Zoom, joining us live on Facebook, listening to the live stream on Four Corners Radio. Encourage your friends and neighbors to tune in later if they missed listening tonight by going to DGov TV's YouTube channel or the LWV La Plata Facebook page for on-demand recording. Onward to the candidate forum. Shelley, it's all yours.
Thank you, Jean, and good evening all, and thank you to all of our candidates. Tonight, we are joined by four candidates seeking two open positions for the job of county commissioner. Two are running for District 2, which includes Durango and a portion of the Animus Valley. They are Marsha Porter Norton, a Democrat, and Jack Turner, unaffiliated. Two are running for District 3, which consists of the eastern portion of the county, including Bayfield and Ignacio. They are Charlie Minkler, unaffiliated, and Matt Salca, Democrat. Members of the Board of County Commissioners are among several elected county officials. Other elected officials include the sheriff, the clerk and recorder, the treasurer, the assessor, the coroner, and the surveyor. The county commissioners have no direct authority over the other elected officials, except they approve the budget for all the offices. Counties are a constitutional subdivision of the state government and are mandated to provide certain services under state law. The role of a county commissioner includes policymaking and legislative functions, administering land use regulations, advocating for citizens at all levels of government, adopting the county budget and ensuring stewardship of county resources, and establishing a vision and setting a strategic direction for county government activities, programs, and infrastructure. This is an important job. One of the great things about a League of Women Voters Candidate Forum is that members of the audience get to ask questions of candidates about questions and issues that interest them, and hear the answers directly from the candidates without edit or filter, making it more like a town hall meeting than a debate. So here are the guidelines for asking questions. Many of you took the opportunity to submit online questions in advance using Google Forms or sending them to our email address. League members Diane Goodchild, Teri Oliger, and Trish Pigram reviewed the questions that were submitted in advance, consolidated those on the same topic to avoid repetition, and clarified as needed. Questions that are not relevant to the office for which the candidate is running will not be included. You can submit questions via the Q&amp;A function on Zoom. Please note that the chat button for this evening has been disabled for this forum. We will not be taking questions via the Facebook Live feed. Questions must be framed to apply to all candidates. Please keep your questions concise and avoid political or personal attacks. As your moderator, I will read the question to the candidates. Karen McManus is assisting me tonight with the questions submitted during the forum. We will try to cover a wide range of relevant topics. All questions may not be asked due to time constraints. We will forward all questions to the candidates for their consideration. Here are the guidelines that the candidates and the League have agreed upon. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement at the beginning, and then one minute to answer each subsequent question before delivering a two-minute closing statement at the end. It is my responsibility to ensure that candidates stay within their time limit. I will end their comments after time limits with the statement, "Thank you, your time is up." There is a timer on the screen to keep the candidates on time. Tonight's timer is League member Jackie Bonanno. The order in which candidates will give their opening statement was determined by a random drawing before the forum, and that order will be reversed for closing statements. We will begin with opening comments. Based on the drawing, here is the order: Charlie, Jack, Matt, and Marsha. Remember, we have two minutes for each candidate. Charlie, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Shelley. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I want to say welcome to everyone who is participating in this meeting tonight. So a little about me, I'm a fourth-generation Coloradoan. I have lived most of my life in La Plata County. I love La Plata County and all of its diversity. I want to ensure that our children and grandchildren have the same opportunities that I've had, that we've had. My many years of experience as a rancher, a business owner, and a planning commissioner have enabled me to be an effective leader who will make a positive difference for our county. La Plata County has given me a livelihood and a beautiful place to raise a family, and I want to give back. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. We'll now move on to Jack.
Well, thank you very much, and it's an honor to be here and as well as on the November ballot with my fellow candidates, Marsha Porter Norton, Matt Salca, and Charlie Minkler. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for 100 years of service to our country. During this campaign, I've spoken often about six generations of Turners, but I feel this is the perfect forum to make special mention of my heroines. This year's celebrations for the women's right to vote reminded me that both of my grandmothers were in their twenties when Amendment 19 was passed. They lived a very ripe old age, and I knew them well. Grandmother June raised six kids while operating the Mesa Verde Company with my mom's dad. On my father's side, his mother Claudine was only five foot one and once chased a bear out of a chicken coop with a broom that was on fire. My own amazing mother raised four of us and a slew of cousins. She taught me carpentry, how to use a shovel, and other skills that many women at the time didn't even have. There's not enough words to describe my sister Laura Waller, who I'm sure many of you know. My daughter Hannah is a brilliant chemical engineer and a veterinarian. And last, and certainly not least, of the women who have given me encouragement, strength, and a bit of discipline from time to time is my beautiful wife, Tori Osala, who is the general manager of the Strayer Hotels, so you can imagine how tough she is. And I'm sure that used up most of my opening time, but I think it's important that I had the opportunity to share that with you. I'm sure that many folks in the online audience who are listening by radio already know me since I grew up here, but if you don't, tonight's forum is a great opportunity to get acquainted with each other. You can also check out my website for information on my background, my professional experience, my perspective on life. My promise is to bring a positive, new perspective to La Plata County government and to be open, respectful, and inclusive of everyone from all walks of life, whether they are Republicans, Democrats, independents, or from any other party that I'm so proud to call my neighbors. Again, thank you for the honor to be here.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Matt, please.
Hello, I'm Matt Salca, and I'm running for county commissioner, District 3. My experiences are mayor of Bayfield, secretary of La Plata Economic Alliance Board, planning commission for the town of Bayfield, and I currently own two small businesses. From those experiences, I've learned what it takes to lead and govern effectively. I'm confident I'll be an asset to the county. Before I moved to La Plata County, I was a son of a military family. I'd attended Fort Lewis College for my information systems degree, and I started a small IT business. Several years later, I started a second business in pest control. I have deep roots here and first learned the importance of public service from my father and grandfather. Serving others is my true passion. I am running because I want all residents to have access to great opportunities to support their families and thrive. And I will continue these efforts the moment I'm elected as La Plata County Commissioner. During my time as mayor, I have achieved a lot for the town, including implemented broadband for Bayfield, water sewer master plan, land use code, mill street revitalization, which helped start our block parties and attracted three new businesses, park master plan, recycling, bear-resistant trash containers, and a new water plant at no additional cost to residents. Transparency as mayor, I felt was crucial that the residents of Bayfield had access to our meetings. These experiences have taught me how to make meaningful progress. I want to be a La Plata County Commissioner so I can keep the county moving in a direction so all residents can enjoy the place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And now, Marsha, please.
I also want to thank, welcome everybody, and thank you for being here to the Facebook audience and listening audience. I want to put my skills in forging common ground to work for healthy communities and a strong economy. My husband, John, who's a Fort Lewis College graduate, and I moved to Durango in 1994. I'm a fourth-generation southwest Coloradoan. My grandparents went to high school where the old Fort Lewis campus is now. And I'm very proud of my history and deep roots in this area, but your future is my focus. Working together isn't just a campaign promise or slogan. It's who I am as a person and professional. I have my own business, and I've had it for 20 years, mediating sticky issues, issues that the county deals with every single day. I help people and groups find common ground and community solutions. I have facilitated letter managed over 1,300 meetings working with 10 groups, and have had the honor and privilege of serving on 10 nonprofit boards and commissions. I have done a lot in this community, and I'd like to move on to what I would like to do for you as commissioner. We need more affordable housing. It's a top priority of mine. We need to diversify our economy with the arts and agriculture value added and all kinds of things we can talk about later. We need to keep good vital county services going because the county is central in this pandemic, and that includes taking care of our roads. We need to plan for future wildfires. The West has so many fires, and we are having them too. I will stand up for clean air and water and renewable energy. There is a lot that we cannot control right now, but we can control who we elect and how much we get done locally. This election is not about me. It's not about campaign ads. It's not even about getting through the pandemic, although that is important. It's about your future, and that's what I will work for for everybody. I'm a proven leader, and I'm honored to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Thank you all for those opening statements. Now, we will go to the questions that were submitted by the citizens. And the way we're going to do this is we're going to go in first-name alphabetical order. So the order will start with Charlie, then go to Jack, Marsha, and Matt. And then with each subsequent question, we'll let the next person go first, and I will call on you so that you don't have to remember that yourself. At about 6:55, we will conclude this portion of the forum with our closing comments by the candidates. So our first question is going to go to Charlie, and it is, "Do you support the new land use code? Why or why not?"
That's a good question. I do support the new land use code. I actually voted against it on the planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner. And the reason is that there are some things in the new code that I think are not good for affordability and attainable housing. And I hope those things get fixed in the near term. But basically, it has some great components. It's long overdue. Ag+ is terrific. The economic development areas are great, and there are many good things about it that we needed badly.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we'll go to Jack.
I do support the new land use code, especially because now that it's been passed, we can take bite-sized chunks of places that basically need to be made better. And everybody that worked on that code, they worked under tremendous pressure because it was reviewed and passed during a pandemic, basically, and public input was severely restricted or hindered, or however you want to call it. The things that bother me about the code that I think we need to address is that, number one is that it puts so much power into the hands of staff, and especially the control of time. There's also a clause called ex parte communication, which basically walls off the commissioners and the public if your property has any chance of being under application for development. And I know the purpose of that is to prevent, you know, under-the-table-type dealings going on or unfair dealings, but I believe the role of a commissioner is to help the people get good projects through and get them done, especially if we're going to take on a massive project such as affordable housing or bringing in, you know, perhaps the development of industrial park.
Thank you, Jack. Okay. Thank you, Jack. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, we will go to Marsha.
Yes, I support the code, and I support it for a couple of reasons. Our other code was over 30 years old. I did 50 listening sessions leading up to and announcing my candidacy last year, and everybody across the county, almost no matter their political stripes, were very frustrated with our old code. We passed a comprehensive plan in '17, and we needed a code. I think it is going to be something that needs monitored. It's a 400-page document, and of course, there's going to be things that need worked out. I too support the Ag+, I support the streamlining, the economic development areas, protection of neighborhoods, and also protecting important values. I think the one thing that concerns me about the code, yes, I think the amount of director discretion has to be monitored by the commissioners. There is more planning director discretion, and we're going to have to really see if that's working. But we need a code that manages growth into our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Okay, we'll go to Matt for this last answer for this question.
Yes, thank you. I do approve the newly adopted land use code. It will help assist and streamline the planning process, a sketch plan submittal option to help lower the front-end costs to developers, businesses, and residents, and as well as Ag+ to give ranchers more options to diversify. As county commissioner, you can count on me to be out there for the residents and businesses to learn and make sure this is not an impediment for this new land use code. So any issues that they have, I am here, open door to listen to any problems. So yes, I do approve the new land use code. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The next question, we'll start with Jack and go to Marsha, Matt, and then Charlie. The question has a few parts. It is, "In your opinion, what is the best thing the county has done in the last four years, and the least good or successful? And what should it stop or start doing?" Jack, you need to unmute.
I apologize. I was saying that I have to give a big shout out to the commissioners for the fact that we're not in horrible debt right now. I think that their prudence is something that should be admired, and of course, the staff was heavily involved in that because we could be in a terrible position considering all that's happened in the last six months. The place that I'm the least satisfied with, quite honestly, is our ability to help businesses basically get started or to develop their land. We just have obstacle after obstacle. Time has run out on these folks, and the folks at Trimble Hot Springs is a perfect example of that, and I really believe that we need to be conscientious about the value of time.
Thank you, Jack. On to Marsha.
The code's probably going to get a lot of airtime tonight, so if you're listening from other parts of Colorado, you can Google it. It's been a very, very big piece of news for our area. And I do think it's the best thing the commissioners and the county have done. The district area plans worked so hard, the people in those groups, the planning commission, the staff worked tirelessly, and I think everybody in our county needs to be proud of it. The least good thing was, I think, the way the first one was rolled out with the consultant from another state. It was rolled out and, gosh, made a lot of people very frustrated and angry. So, and the commissioners admitted that could have been done in a more smooth way. What I think they need to stop is, I agree with Jack on this, is stop things that don't make sense for business development. I've heard a lot of stories in that area, and in a pandemic and in general, we need to grow small businesses. What we need to start is, I think, we need many more on-the-road meetings to talk to residents, not just periodically. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Lastly, on this question, I'm sorry, next is Matt, and then Charlie.
Yes, thank you. So the best, there's two best items that I have, and that is the budget, the budget turnaround with the oil and gas loss. I thank the staff and county commissioners for getting to be able to turn this around, and things are looking much better than what they were previously projected. As well as, the next one is a land use code too as well. It needed some updating. It's been a very long time since the last time it was updated. And the least is for me is the transparency, the public interaction reaching out to the community. I believe, as with the land use code, that this could have been a whole lot, done a whole lot different. As the past mayor, I've definitely reached out to the public, listened to them first, then implemented a plan, and then go for another review from the public. So for me is public interaction with the residents of La Plata County.
Thank you, Matt, and Charlie.
So I'd have to agree with my fellow candidates that, for me, it's a combination of the new land use code and the way the current commissioners handled our fiscal situation. They've left, they were going to hand it over to whoever wins this election in great shape. That's terrific. One of the things I liked about going through the process of writing a new land use code was getting all of our district plans updated, and that was a huge effort by the entire community. And I shout out to everyone in the community who spent many, many hours to make that happen, and that advised the new code and helped write it. So that was a great accomplishment. As far as things I don't like, again, it's the economic development. I have to go there. We're a great incubator for businesses, and we get them started, and then we send them somewhere else because it's so hard for them to stay here and grow here.
Thank you, Charlie. The next question, we'll start with Marsha and go to Matt, Charlie, and Jack. And the question is, "Are you confident in the fiscal integrity/security procedures in place for the county?" Okay, first, we'll go to Marsha.
That's a really important question. The key job of a commissioner is overseeing precious resources given to us by taxpayers and other levels of government. Federal government dollars come into our county, highway dollars, PILT money, I mean, the acronyms go on and on, and state money. So it's very important. I am confident, since I announced, I have been on every single Zoom call since the pandemic of the county meetings. I'm participating in the budgeting process, and I did last year as well. And I have a lot of confidence, both through audits, through the control mechanisms, and through the staff, that our finances are well-managed and well-handled. But a key role of a commissioner is the watchdog role to ensure that that continues, and again, that taxpayer money goes to help the citizens of La Plata County. So it's a role I take very seriously, but I do have a lot of confidence in the way that taxpayer funds are managed by La Plata County. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Next, we'll go to Matt.
Yes, I do have confidence in what's going on with the county. As the past six years, as a town manager or town mayor and a town trustee, I have a lot of experience with reviewing the budget, making sure that public money is going into the right organizations. So yes, as a role as county commissioner, I will make sure to review all processes that are coming in front of us and make sure that we keep a balanced budget, trust in our audits, and make sure that all the funds that we get from taxpayers is used properly and is not overspent, and keeping a balanced budget every single year as I am county commissioner.
Thank you, Matt. Next, Charlie.
Again, I have to agree with my fellow candidates that the finances of the county have been handled very well. I've personally attended either in person by Zoom or listened later to every Long Term Finance Committee meeting that's been held in our county. And these are a great group of individuals who kind of guide the finances of our county, watch over it, make sure we're doing things wisely, and their input is much appreciated, and it's been heated, and that's part of what has gotten us where we are. And that's a group of voluntary citizens that have stepped up to fill that role. So between them and our current commissioners, they've done a terrific job. And I think, as Marsha said, that the commissioner's most important job is looking over and spending wisely the finances of the county, and I pledge to do that myself.
Thank you, Charlie. To you, Jack.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with performance of our elected officials and staff, and I don't have any reason to doubt anybody's honesty or integrity or the basic security of our systems. I have to give a shout out also how well they've managed, you know, certain grant processes and assistance from the state and feds during this pandemic. I think they're very clever and very thoughtful about how they've done a lot of this. The only places that I really have some questions is I did some comparisons between our county and some that were much greater and much smaller with both the legal department and our planning department. So for example, we have 21 staff members in planning. A county mesa that's three times our size only has 50% more, and yet they do all the inspections for Grand Junction. We have seven members, the legal team. Pueblo County has nine. So I think we're a little fat in some places, and we need to be a little bit more careful.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, the next question, we'll first go to Matt, then Charlie, Jack, Thank you, Jack. Okay, the next question, we'll first go to Matt, then Charlie, Jack, and Marcia. And the question is, what are the biggest things the county needs to plan for to eventually accommodate 75,000 to 100,000 residents? Matt?
That could be a lot longer than one minute. But honestly, we need to prepare for the future. As my past experiences, we have done just that in the town of Bayfield. So for me, my biggest worry would be road and bridges. More people, more traffic, more road use. And that's my, one of my biggest worries is, how can we come up with enough funds to be able to prepare for the future? As well as water. Water is key. We need to make sure that we have adequate water in order to provide for the new residents coming into La Plata County. So those are two of my main issues, as well as quality jobs. Quality jobs is important. If we don't have quality, good paying jobs, then people will not be able to afford to live here, as well as attainable and affordable housing. This all works hand in hand, but we need to prepare, not just for today, but we need to prepare for tomorrow.
Thank you, Matt. Let's go now to Charlie, please.
Thank you for that question. So this, to me, the key part of preparing for more people, well, there's two things. One is economic development. We have to bolster and support our businesses in our county, not drive them out, make them welcome, help them grow and stay here. And that, as Matt said, will provide career jobs for people. All jobs are important, though, whether they're in the service industry, tourism related, those are all important. So that's, that's number one for me. I think wise, land use is also very important. So we've got to be careful that we preserve our agricultural lands, preserve them for the future, and help growth go to places that's near infrastructure and where density can be acquired.
Thank you, Charlie. Jack?
Well, you're right. Our county is going to grow for sure. And the question is, are we going to be a county that has a great proportion of affluent people and most of our workers have to commute from a distance even out of state like they do now? Or are we going to have a county where there's more working folk that can actually live and have a job here? The other candidates touched on water, roads, infrastructure, all those things are important. And the question is, how do you pay for those things? And the one element that we have never been, done a good job of is taking advantage of public and private partnerships, something other than either taxation or putting all the burden on the back of the developer. It's real easy to say development has to pay its own way, but it's not that simple. A broad statement like that is no, has no more sense than saying all the homeless have to do is get a job. We have to think in new ways.
Thank you, Jack. Marcia?
Well, I would certainly agree with what everybody has said. We're going to have to plan for all of it. That's the job of the long-range planning that government officials take on, housing, jobs, water, infrastructure, sewer, transportation, schools, and on and on. I think what we really need to do is build partnerships with the city of Durango and look at the La Posta area. We're basically adding a town or city the size of Durango by nine short years. It's going to be 73,005, I think, is what the demographer said. So I think this is where my ability to bring people together and forge partnerships is important, is we're going to need to work with the town of Bayfield, the tribe, if they would like to be part of it, because we need to drive growth to areas where there are services or we can get services. And we're also going to need to make sure we're paying for it in a fair, equitable way. And we're going to need to make sure that we don't have sprawl all over the county so this place doesn't look recognizable to us in five or 10 years. And all of that is going to take leadership and partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. I now want to take a live question from the audience at this point. Nancy McManus, would you please go ahead and ask that question? And the order for this will be Charlie, Jack, Marcia, and Matt.
The question is a little long. It says, looking for fair and balanced solutions to unmanaged development of the failed 420 lot Durango estates in Junction Creek. Tax liens for the lots are very cheap. People are living there now without proper sanitation, land use planning, or community friendliness. Do we want to allow hundreds of tiny homes there without any approval?
Yes, I'm a little familiar with that area and some of the issues and problems that occur there. I know that there has been some kind of camping out and, and living without all the infrastructure that should be present when people reside on property. So I don't believe that should be allowed. There might be a better and higher use for that property. Hopefully, we can work to find that solution and stick to enforcing our land use codes and not let people run roughshod up there.
Thank you, Charlie. Jack? Jack, you need to unmute.
I apologize. I'm nervous. I was saying that I'm not particularly familiar with all the details of that project. I know there's a number of places around the county where due to the age of the development or the activity that was there, it's caused some issues that need to be taken care of. I think that one thing that's, that's important is that as we bring in new development, is that we make sure it doesn't get into, whether it's a sprawl type mess or no regulations, that sort of thing. But I think the other thing is, we've got to make sure that we don't become so concerned about checking every box that we never, that we hold up a lot of projects because we're worried there may be one or two bad ones.
Thank you, Jack. Marcia?
Yeah, actually, a person who I've known for a long time, met her through Firewise, told me about this situation. She lives up in the area. And I think it is really important to enforce our codes because you can't, without, that's what a land use code is for, is we have a certain set of rules about land use and how people are going to live on land. And once we go through a democratic process, meaning democracy, to get those things in place, I think it is very important to enforce them. It's a really big concern for that neighborhood. And if anybody's been up there, the neighborhood tends to be rural, it's quiet, there's not as much traffic, they don't have a lot of traffic up there, and people are really concerned. And the other thing I would say that is a huge concern about this particular situation is wildfire. If you have people camping and you get a wildfire there, that's right on the southern end of the 416 fire range. And then sanitation. So if people do not have proper sanitation, that comes right down into, I guess that would be, I think it's the Lightyear Creek watershed. And so we have, we have to enforce our land use code so it's fair for everybody.
Thank you, Marcia. Matt?
Yes, very, we need to follow our new land use code. That's one reasons why we were part of this, to get this updated. My biggest worry is definitely what candidate Marcia Porter Norton has said, is wildfires in that area. But really, what I'm very concerned about is the sanitation. I do know about the sanitation issues in that area. And the health and safety of the residents in that area really concerns me. So for me, is to follow the new land use code and make sure that we implement and help out these, these residents to be able to make sure that they can comply and be a part of getting back onto the system and being legit. So yes, let's follow our land use code and help them out.
Thank you, Matt. Here's the next question. It will go first to Jack, then Marcia, Matt, and Charlie. And the question is, what can be done for better coordination with other local governments, including the Southern Ute Tribal Government? Jack?
Well, I think as far as courting with other governments, whether it's the city of Durango, or the other municipalities, or the tribe, or the state for that matter, is that the commissioners, it's a full-time job. It's one of the duties to pay attention to what's going on, make sure you're engaged, make sure you're up to speed on what the issues are, and that you can make valuable contributions or keep your eye on if that's the case. And quite honestly, that's one of the things I think the current commissioners have done a pretty good job of. In fact, I think they've done an excellent job of it. So I have a hard time saying what we're going to be able to do that's better than what they've done. But the other thing too, I think that, that's important is to be open to more than just respecting each other's boundaries. I think there's a lot of ways that the county and especially the town, the city of Durango could cooperate on some redundancies. And there's so much turf building that I hope we can eventually get away from. I think that's important.
Thank you, Jack. Marcia?
I think this is where my background in doing very difficult and sticky issues, the Hermosa Creek Work Group had all the governments involved, the Forest Service, the State of Colorado, many agencies, San Juan County and La Plata County, and the city of Durango eventually got involved. So I've had a lot of experience in intergovernmental relationships and agreements and mediation. And that skill is going to be very, very handy when I am elected commissioner. I think it is crucial. La Plata County cannot handle all of these problems on our own. We've seen that with the pandemic. And I think what it's about is having a good attitude about building relationships, going out and having coffee and not, not making decisions, but getting to know people. I think the tribe is crucial. They are a sovereign nation. It's very important that we respect our tribal neighbors and get to know them. And today, as a matter of fact, the commissioners designated on a celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I'm very excited about that. So we have...
Thank you, Marcia. Next, we'll go to Matt.
Relations, relationships are key. Anything accomplished, especially in La Plata County. A past mayor and town trustee for a total of six years, I have developed a lot of key relationships within the La Plata County. So as county commissioner, I can hit the ground running and keep moving forward with the relationships I've already developed as a past mayor and town trustee. So for me, that's the only way we can get things developed or have things happen. Past relationship with me would be with La Plata Archileter Water District. We were able to get a brand new water plant at no additional cost to residents. Why? Due to a relationship between two different organizations and completing the common goal that we both want. So yes, I'm all about speaking out to everyone.
Thank you, Matt. Charlie?
It has also been my experience that building personal relationships with peers is very important. And I would strive to do that, continue to do it, as I've done my whole life. So I would take the opportunity when elected to, right away, meet these folks, city councilors and tribal council people, and meet them one-on-one, visit with them, get to know them, talk about things that concern them, and then schedule opportunities to meet together often, so that we're truly working together and not at cross purposes. And I live within the boundaries of the Southern Ute Reservation, and my neighbors are Southern Utes. And I respect them very much. And I've always felt like I've been a good neighbor, and they've been good neighbors to me. And I'd like to continue that relationship.
Thank you, Charlie. We have another live question that's come in. The order for answering this will be Marcia, Matt, Charlie, and Jack. Karen, do you want to read the question, please?
Yes, the question is, what are your thoughts about ways to provide affordable workforce housing?
Oh, I'm so glad that question came up. It has been in my platform since day one. I released a detailed platform. I was the first candidate to do so in March, and I updated it in July, and I continue to refine it. It is a crucial issue. 50% of people in our county cannot afford to buy any kind of home, townhome, you know, a modular, whatever they may be able to even try to attain. It's a big issue. I'm going to put a lot of energy, political capital, if you will, relationship building and energy into this. My platform calls for doing a countywide plan. And I detail in a blog on my website what would go into that plan. It would involve the private sector, putting tools in the toolkit, working with the city of Durango, infrastructure providers, philanthropists, anybody that wants to come to the table. We need to do this. I did a listening session on affordable housing. Many young people in our community don't even have it on their wish list. We have to do more, and I will lead the charge if elected.
Thank you, Marcia. Off to Matt.
Yes, thank you. Very important question. So for me, past experiences was working with a 52 lot subdivision in the town of Bayfield. I know firsthand the driving costs that residents are unable to afford in La Plata County. So for me, would be to working with the developers, the government, and the landowners to try to find ways to be able to have it being more affordable for residents to obtain. The other thing would be is to work with the organizations in La Plata County. We have many great organizations that work hard for making sure that affordable and attainable and workforce housing is possible. But for me, I would start questioning is to maybe bring some of these organizations together, create a plan. And as county commissioner, I will work hard to be able to be on the front lines to make sure that this can be attainable.
Thank you, Matt. Charlie?
Affordability is also an issue that's near and dear to me. I've been a home builder for over 30 years in La Plata County. So I know firsthand the obstacles to homeownership, what it costs to build, what it costs to develop. And to me, there are three things that affect housing costs. One is the market. You can't really do much about that. The other is government regulation. We can do a little bit about that. Let's make sure we don't pass more regulation that makes it more expensive to build. And then finally, economic development. The best thing that we can do for the residents of our county is to close the wage gap to affordability. And we do that by stimulating economic development, keeping good businesses here, bringing in career-type employment so that our children and grandchildren can afford to live and stay here.
Thank you, Charlie. Jack?
Well, that's a very personal question to me. My, my kids are sixth generation Durango and age 30 and 28. And they tell me, Dad, we can't afford to move home. And again, I am so concerned about the idea that our workforce is going to have to travel in from great distances because they can't afford to live here. All things come back to infrastructure. The items the other candidates brought up are all, all important. But the thing that I would like to pull out separate from what they've done is that there's nothing in the land use code that really would incentivize or give an extra benefit to someone that's developing workforce housing. And I believe that we need to be creative in public-private partnerships so that we can get, so we can fast track these things rather than having them be drug out over an extended period of time, because time is what really runs up the cost as well as building materials, labor, land, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, the order for our next question will be Matt, Charlie, Jack, and Marcia. And the question is, should the fairgrounds be reimagined for much broader non-fair purposes? And the second part of the question is, should the county fair pay for itself? Okay, Matt?
Good question. For me, I believe there has been the, the talk about the other location for the fairgrounds to be moved with the city of Durango to purchase the current fairgrounds. Me, you know, as you previously asked, and one question was up to 70,000 people in La Plata County. So for me, yes, to start, start thinking in the future, we need to start spreading our wings to give more opportunities for the fairgrounds to get, get larger if they would like to. But for the cost of being able to have the county to pay for this, we need to probably, we need to develop some relationships in order to work on something this, like this together. I think that it's going to be really difficult for just the county alone to be able to pull something like this off.
Thank you, Matt. Charlie?
So I, I agree that probably this, the proposed location at Durango Mesa is nowadays a better place for the fair. There's lots of space up there. We can expand and build facilities there. There's already talk of partnerships with government and business to develop that. Those are all great things. Should that fair pay for itself? I don't think so. I think that the county should continue to help support the fair. It supports agriculture in our county, which is so important to our landscape. It supports all those 4H kids. It supports all those 4-H kids that learn and grow so much from all the programs they're in. And for those reasons, I think that the county should continue to support it to the extent that they do.
Thank you, Charlie. Jack?
Yes, the fairgrounds, you know, has a lot of tradition. I remember while growing up, that we used to have the rodeos there and the racetrack. And, you know, the baseball fields in there mean a lot to a lot of people, but the fact is, that large parcel of land stretching between the rec center and the high school is probably the greatest underutilized piece of property in the county. It's close to infrastructure, streets, a lot of jobs, that sort of thing. So I am totally open to us being creative with what, with what could be done there. As far as Durango Mesa goes, I'm really excited and grateful to the Katz family for buying that. And the only thing that concerns me, from what I've heard about the project, is they're sort of divvying it up between the city and then another share for the county. And, you know, we don't operate the airport that way. I don't know why we can't have the best facility in the world up there if we all partner and work together. I just don't think there should be two separate entities.
Thank you, Jack. Marcia?
The fairgrounds board went through a very extensive process and planning process a couple of years ago that led to a master plan to, yes, move the fairgrounds up to Ewing Mesa, and I support that. It's a very expensive price tag. And so to ever do that, there's going to have to be public-private partnerships, maybe GoCo money, all kinds of money thrown at it to get the fairgrounds up there. But if you've never been up there, it's a beautiful place, it's a great place for it. And absolutely, the fairgrounds can morph into recreation and all kinds of purposes, but we need to also keep the fair up there. It's important to so many of our county residents. And I don't think the fair should have to entirely pay for itself, and I say that as a 10-year pen for, I have my 10-year pen being in 4-H as a kid. It's important, and sometimes, sometimes you don't have to have things completely paid their own way when there's other payouts, like youth development and all the great things that 4-H brings. But I'd like to see a big vision to, to Ewing Mesa. Thank you.
We are now at 6:54, and I'm going to ask one last question before closing comments. And the order for this question will be Charlie, Jack, Marcia, and Matt. And the question is, will you raise property taxes? Why or why not? Charlie?
Well, county commissioners can't raise property taxes, only the voters can. And so I would not be raising taxes. I think that if there's a reason for county commissioners to raise taxes, it's to help fix our roads. So we have county roads that are in pretty bad condition. Now, at some point in time, the residents of La Plata County will decide that it's time for everybody to participate in fixing the roads, and when that time comes, I'll support it wholeheartedly. But the question is really up to the voters in La Plata County.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we go to Jack.
Well, the, the tax issue, of course, is Tabor. That's the biggest share of it. And of course, the county commissioners just can't pass a tax. Now, many people disparage Tabor because they think it unfairly shackles government leadership, but I look at it in a positive way, saying that what this really does is it puts responsibility onto our citizens to not just cut taxes, but to help us invest as needed. And one of the issues we've gotten into is with taxes, it's become such a bipolar thing often between, you know, the two major parties, and it causes people at times to actually vote against their own best interests because they're just so suspect of the other side that may be proposing it. And that's why I believe that when I'm a county commissioner, I haven't picked sides, and I believe that I can talk to everyone and give them my best advice on like, look, this is, is in your best interest to support, be part of the community, and raise taxes if the occasion should ever come along, we need to do that.
Thank you, Jack. Marcia?
First of all, I think that the combination of Tabor with Gallagher is pretty destructive. And so that's a whole discussion in and of itself, that we have an amendment on the ballot that is, is going to get rid of Gallagher. So, so I actually disagree somewhat that, that Tabor's a good thing, because when you put it in there with Gallagher, it's really destructive to our schools and many services. As far as raising property taxes, I think we have to keep all tools on the table. Our county roads are our biggest asset, and we are behind about a million and a half a year and counting in our road and bridge fund, and we're going to have to keep all options on the table. The previous candidates were correct that we, we could not do that as county commissioners. I served on the 16 Road and Bridge Campaign, and we, we thought we had it, and obviously we didn't. And so I learned from that, serving on that campaign, that it's about talking to everybody you can find before taking anything to ballot, and that's what I would do if elected.
Thank you, Marcia. Matt?
Yes, thank you. So exactly all three other candidates are correct. It is one for me, I have been part of, with the town of Bayfield, a 1% sales tax increase, and that was due to the voters voting for this. So for as county commissioner, if there's a citizen coalition that's wanting to back this to help project and present for, to get on the ballot, then I would be for this. We, what we need to do is prepare for the future, like I said before, not today, but for tomorrow. And our roads and bridges need desperate repair. So for me, I, we need to find other ways to collect that shortfall for the $1.5 million, like Marcia just said. And if this is something that the residents of La Plata County wants to move forward with, then I would, I would be a part of that.
Thank you, Matt. Now, we will go with our closing statements. Again, the order is Marcia, Matt, Jack, and Charlie, and you have two minutes each. Marcia?
First of all, thank you, League of Women Voters, and I want to thank my fellow candidates. I think this is so important in a pandemic that we keep these traditions. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, we're living in a really hard time, it's a time of crisis. We have small businesses closing, people wondering how they're going to make their monthly payments, how they're going to educate their children, there is a lot on your plates. I really think the job of a county commissioner requires knowledge, experience, good communication, and an ability to lead. I believe I am the better-prepared candidate and best suited to lead in these times. And that is no disrespect to Mr. Turner, I think he has many good qualifications, I think people have to assess what someone's experience in public service is. I have a detailed platform, I want to hear from you, is it fit with what you think your needs are? Being a county commissioner takes partnerships. It takes partnerships with your staff, it takes partnerships with nine other elected officials, including two other commissioners, it takes partnerships with 40 boards and commissions, a county manager, and yes, an attorney. And that's what I excel at, that has been my profession for 26 years living here. I have been endorsed by the Durango Herald, and just like Mr. Turner has, as well as many, many other people on my website, you can see who they are, and they're not endorsing me out of political expediency, they're endorsing me because I know the county, I know how to lead, they know my integrity, they know my resume and experience, and I think they're rooting for me to help us plan for our future. I know what it's like to scrape and make a living here. When we moved here, we had $10,000 in our checkbook. And I, you know, we've been able to start two businesses, businesses here, my husband and I, I led a nonprofit, I've had a lot of community service, and I, it, La Plata County's been very good to me, and I want to help other people in our community, no matter when they got here. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Matt?
Yes, thank you. Relationships, they are key to getting things accomplished. I have cultivated relationships throughout La Plata County during my time as mayor, gotten a lot done for Bayfield, and I want to use those relationships in bringing meaningful changes to La Plata County. As a running resident of La Plata County for 19 years, I know all too well how tight this housing market is. I believe there is ways to create affordable and attainable housing for first-time homebuyers. My experience with Bayfield's Planning Commission helped me understand how better relationships between developers, landowners, and government can achieve this goal. As a small business owner, I know personally how difficult it is to live in a county where the cost of living increases yearly. We need larger employers with well-paying jobs. As a leader of the Mill Street Revitalization Committee in Bayfield and the La Plata Economic Alliance, I know the hard work that goes into attracting and retaining businesses. I'm committed to pursuing more opportunities for our community and ensuring that future growth is equitable and benefits all within the county. Infrastructure is key to smart growth. Our county roads and bridges must be maintained for our safety and future growth. As mayor, I helped lead Bayfield's water plant expansion at no additional cost to town residents. Recently, I helped secure a $1 million grant for a $3 million water line replacement project. Broadband is a huge issue in La Plata County. Let me bring my experiences to help fight for better broadband access in the county. As county commissioner, you can count on me to seek grants, work to build strategic partnerships, and always look out for La Plata's best interests. Please help me accomplish these goals by giving me your vote. I want to express my gratitude to the League of Women Voters and Shelley Walchak, thank you for letting me speak with you all tonight. You can find more information at mattsulka.com and my Facebook page, Sulka 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Jack?
Yes, I, I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters and give a tip of the hat to my fellow candidates up here. And clearly, I'm what you might call an outsider, because we're having a historic election here, and that Charlie and I are the first two independents to be on the ballot facing our Democrat opponents. Now, when I say I'm an independent, that doesn't mean I dislike Republicans or dislike the Democrats. I just feel that we need to find a way to draw the best out of all, out of everyone in La Plata County so they can start working together. And, you know, the, the political parties have been very well organized, but they're basically private institutions that have set the agenda for how you get nominated and how you're qualified, and I just don't think that's the only way things should be done. And the beauty of American elections is that we take turns, and when our time is over, other citizens are responsible, and they step up to the plate. And I hope that taking turns also means that no political party will dominate all the offices with the influence or advantages they've had now, especially when they're not a majority of the voters. I think it would be healthy if our local, for our local elections, if more candidates put in the work to get on, to get 1,000 signatures to be on the ballot rather than being nominated by a select few. If that happens, we'll, we'll keep reinventing and reorganizing citizen groups rather than fortifying established lanes of ideology and political habit. In closing, I believe the sun always rises on La Plata County. We will survive and thrive, especially if our most important calling is to get along with each other. If I'm given the chance to serve as your county commissioner, my promise is to give a fair listen to everyone. And since I have no political debt or party ties, I believe I offer the best chance for a broad coalition of people to hit the reset button without losing face by giving into their perceived opposition. I'll be honest, transparent, and thoughtful in leadership and being your partner, whether there is good news or bad, and I'll work my tail off to do so. Thank you for your consideration, I hope you'll vote for me on November 3rd.
Thank you, Jack. Charlie?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters for making this forum possible in these challenging times. When I look ahead to what I perceive to be the future of our county, I see a possibility where only wealthy and elites can afford to live here, and that bothers me. When I came here as a young man, in my twenties, you know, I, I was able to scratch out a living and, and make something of it, and afford to, to buy a home and eventually a ranch, and, you know, I'm afraid, as Jack said, our children or grandchildren are losing that opportunity, and I want to reverse that through a couple of ways. And the main one is through economic development. We need to stimulate our economy, we need to support the businesses that are struggling now in the county, and La Plata County is full of brilliant people, it's a great incubator for businesses. They start here, they grow to a point, and then they leave because we don't support them, we don't let them stay here. So economic development is key. I also am passionate about community unity, and I have done, and will continue to work on getting rural and urban people sit down together, work together to solve some of the problems going forward, and make La Plata County the wonderful place, continue to make it the wonderful place it has been and will be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I have just some short closing remarks. I want to thank all of you candidates for participating in tonight's forum and for your willingness to serve. Thanks to all of you who submitted questions and have joined us virtually. A special thanks goes to Four Corners Radio for live broadcasting this forum, and the city of Durango and Durango Government Television for recording this forum for replay and on-demand viewing. The next forum is the League of Women Voters FLC, Fort Lewis College Student Ballot Issues Forum, on Wednesday, October 14th at 5:30. Please join us virtually to hear presentations by FLC students on the 11 statewide ballot issues. Be sure to visit website, vot411.org for information about the candidates in all the races across the state. Vote411.org is also a one-stop shop for voter registration and general voter information. To verify your registration, visit the website, govotecolorado.com. Thank you to Karen McManus, Diane Goodchild, and Ross and Ellen Park for making this forum happen. And most importantly, thank you to our viewers and citizens of this great county who are taking your voting responsibilities seriously. It is you who make our democracy work. Ballots will be mailed on October 9th, Election Day is November 3rd. Please remember to vote. Thank you all so much for joining us, and good night.